As everyone is aware, we made the difficult decision to discontinue our current local transportation, AKA the B line, as of June 30th, 2020. We've put a lot of effort into understanding our riders' needs, and they've developed a policy for your review. Town meeting voted to support this initiative with $50,000, and we were very pleased recently to hear back from the state that they were willing to provide us with a matching grant of $50,000 for this program, which I think validates the promise of the program that we're undertaking. That said, this is a pilot program, and the purpose of a pilot program is to work out the kinks as to what we're trying to accomplish. So, the policy presented this evening will likely need to be tweaked in the future. Thank you to Maj, John, and also to Whitney Haskell from Finance for all your hard work to date on this. John, Maj?
So, with that, Mr. Chairman, you have had the policy with you, and there are three items really that reemphasizes what we told town meeting that we will propose, which is a system that will replace our Burlington Transit with what we see as a better system. And as we spoke at town meeting, there's requirements for who can get the subsidies, basically subsidy-based system. And so, we had age, which we're proposing anybody 60 and older, residents' abilities, and residents whose household income is less than 100% of the pervert line, which sounds like a lot, 300%, but if somebody lives in Burlington, then I think that comes up to about $60,000 a year. So, those are the three criteria to be eligible to participate in this subsidy program. And how it'll work is basically the rider will pay for the first dollar of any service that they will get. The additional $10, if it's more than that, will be covered automatically by the town, and anything over the $11 will go back to the rider. Now, the reason we set up this structure like this is because within Burlington, we've seen the most rides, if not all, are less than $11, and if you were to use a system like Uber or Lyft. So, the idea again is that for the rider, it will only cost him one. We're currently out to bid for this. In fact, the bid opening will be on Wednesday, so we want to be ready with the policy so we can start working as soon as January on this pilot program.
Thank you. Maj, anything?
No, I'm good.
So, I just have a real quick question I'm going to ask, and we're going to go from there. You read over the policy, everything looks really good. Then I was reading something in here that says approval applicants will receive up to $10 ride for any ride within the state of Massachusetts.
Correct.
So, they can go from here to Springfield, and it's only going to cost them $10, it will cost us $10.
Correct.
Us $10. Okay. I just wanted to make sure that that was cleared. And how would you, we got to put this out there for the residents? Website? How are they going to know?
Well, the main way too, that we're going to advertise this is through our Burlington Transit system, because really this is to support the people who are currently using it. So, yeah, we'll do website and that, but we already created some lists of the people who traditionally take transit systems, and we're going to pretty much talk to all of them, and also put notices on the bus, et cetera. Don't forget, we're going to keep the bus running for the duration until June while we are doing this pilot program as well.
All right, gentlemen, we'll start with Mr. Hogan.
I have nothing, thank you.
I just have one quick question. Maybe it's just I'm reading it wrong, but under subsidy, the very bottom line, the very last line, should I read if the rides cost us over $10? The ride will pay for any, the ride will pay for anything over $10?
No, because remember, they pay for the first dollar, and then the town pays the other 10, which will make it 11. So, anything over the 11, you know, because I'm going like one step, then next step. I know what you mean, but...
You know, it's because it says it's over 11, not at 11.
Right, right. I mean, we can change it if we were clarified. I know what you're getting at, you know?
Yeah, it's just a gray area that I don't want to see gray, but...
Okay.
That's, that was my...
Ike?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm on that subcommittee, so I'm somewhat familiar with the program. And again, it's already been mentioned, this is a pilot program. I'm sure we're going to have some kinks as we go along, but we do have a certain amount of our population that does rely on this kind of transportation. So, I'm in full support of the policy, and hopefully, hopefully, it's going to help with our declining numbers of people who are just not using our transportation any longer. Hopefully, this will sort of stabilize that.
Good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it's great that we got the extra $50,000. That's going to be huge in terms of the program itself. The one, the one outstanding question I had was in terms of how to use the service. You can use a smartphone through the company's app, I got that. Using a regular phone, the concierge service, how is that going to work in terms of payment?
So, all of the payments that people will have to qualify for through the COA and the director who's here, and there is going to be pretty much connected by an ID number, which will be probably a phone number. And that's the way in which we tell whether the concierge or the transportation service, whether it is, we call it TNC, whether it's Lyft or Uber, through the phone number, they know what they will qualify for. So, it'll be automatic, it'll be seamless to the user.
Okay.
So, the user calls on that phone number immediately, that will get tagged to, okay, this is the type of subsidy that person will get.
Sure, okay. All right. I know a lot of folks have voiced concern about this program, and I know a lot of us in the room have had these conversations, whether it be a town meeting or at various subcommittees, and we're all, we're all in favor, in favor, I guess, to the extent where we're using this to really gauge, is this going to work? And you can't know if it's going to work unless you try it, right? You know, it's tough when you get rid of a service like a, like a public transportation, like a bus. I think it's something that people are used to, and it's never easy to try and change, let alone add more cars to the road as folks try to get from point A to point B. But I think, as we all have said, and we all understand, people have to get to where they need to be, and it is no longer financially smart of us to continue using the B line in its current form. So, I thank you for all the work that you've put into this. I hope it goes well, or at least that we have a solid amount of information to move forward with, whatever we're going to move forward with. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Just real quick, just want to thank everybody for their involvement in this. I think the program's going to work out fine. It is a pilot program, like we've said probably eight times already tonight, just to make sure everyone hears that. It's a pilot program, so there will be some kinks, there'll be some bugs to work out, but that's all part of trying something new, and hopefully, this all works out for us. So, at this point, we need an approval...
Mr. Chairman, if you don't, if you don't mind me saying, just so here Mr. Tigger's comment on the last bullet over there, the ride costs over $11, maybe add the words "in addition to the first dollar."
Yeah.
To add those words at the end of the paragraph, so this, just to clarify that...
Just ask Rachel.
Thank you.
So, that'll be the amendment, so thank you.
All right, so this is approval, right?
Yes.
Gentlemen?
I'll make the motion to approve our subsidized transportation pilot program.
Motion, my neck, seconded by Jim. All those in favor?
Aye.
I opposed against. Five zero zero in favor.
Thank you very much.
All right, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next up, we have AMC Theater here with an update on how, update for the board on a trial period on which you allowed the patrol staff to take on additional duties in regards to alcohol license.
Excellent.
Hello.
Hi, you're back.
I am back. I feel like I've got monthly meetings now. So, I provided some numbers that you had requested when we first started talking about this. I think that it's been very useful for us, for sure. I actually feel like we're almost having a little bit more presence available now for those monitors to be in the auditoriums, and we've had no issues, and it's certainly been, been helping keep those kids working. So, it's good.
Excellent, glad it's working. Gentlemen, any comments on this, or, because this is just a discussion for...
Just an update.
Update?
Just one comment. I'm really glad to see that the agreement we came to was valid. You gave us the numbers, and the weekends still are busier, and Saturday's the numbers just jump off the page, so...
Sure.
I'm glad we were still having the dedicated person for those nights.
Yeah.
So, thank you for that.
So, I think, I think we're really good. I'm glad that numbers worked out, and I'm glad things are working out at the theater for you. So, did you tell that young gentleman we were very happy with his performance?
I actually had sent that all the way up to my boss in our, at our home office in Kansas.
Excellent.
And our social media concerned folks jumped right all over that. They sent a little plaque to us to thank us for dealing with, you know...
Fantastic.
Hard issues and making the best of the experience, so it was great, and it was very appreciated, so, thank you.
Awesome, fantastic.
Mr. Chairman, I think if you want to amend the policy permanently, we'll have to have a public hearing in the future.
Okay.
But this is just an update for the board.
Plus, you want to be.
I got my monthly appointment, because I won't know what to do next month, so...
So, we'll have to do a public hearing in the future if you decide to amend this permanently into your alcohol regulations.
Okay, so, think about what you want to do, and we'll go from there, all right?
I appreciate it.
All right, we're good.
Thank you.
Fantastic, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, next up, Mr. Chairman, 267, Town Administrator as Signatory. We received this agenda item from Betty and from Town Council, Lisa Mead. The town bylaws allow the town administrator to sign contracts for goods and services on behalf of the board. However, there are other documents that come up from time to time that are not specifically addressed within the bylaws. Ordinarily, we request the signatory authority within an approval action from the board, but if you take this action, this will allow me to sign other documents that come in from time to time on the board's behalf, even if it's not specifically stated within the motion.
Okay, we'll start with Jimmy.
No comment at this time.
Michael?
Betty?
No, sir.
Mr. Priest?
Does this cover any and all? Like, what's the parameters around this? And at what point does it need to come before, like, I guess, it's like we just open the floodgate? Like, where's the...
There are certain contracts that command for supplies, et cetera, or even when we're doing housing, the housing, housing projects...
Yep.
That they command, they actually show up in our office with the town administrator line instead of the selectman line, but this gives Paul the authority to sign on your behalf.
Okay.
Usually after a motion has been taken.
Excellent. That's all, thank you.
No, I'm, I'm good.
Oh, good.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll make a motion that the board's selectmen move to authorize the town administrator execute contracts as may be approved by us, the board's selectmen.
Seconded.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes. Five zero zero.
Thank you.
Sign away, my friend.
Next up, Mr. Chairman, we have an update on the status of the Bacito alcohol license. As you know, the board is aware, we've instituted the best practice of being formally updated as to the status of inactive liquor licenses within the community. Attorney Vaughn is here to provide us with an update on the license from Bacito. Welcome, Mark.
Good evening, Mark and Paul, and good evening, members of the board. For the record, Attorney Mark Vaughn with a law firm, Reema Bronstein, here tonight on this matter. Appreciate the chance to be here again. So, I think, I do have some good news to report. I know I was before you, I want to say back in November, and maybe prior to that, just relative to the status of a liquor license transfer. Again, this is for the Bacito liquor licenses at the Burlington Mall. So, a restaurant has been identified for a transfer application to be made for that liquor license. We're actually planning on submitting before Christmas to the planning board for our special permit application. Any restaurant does require special permit approval from the planning board, so we're looking to get that in in order to be on for a early February planning board hearing date, which would then allow us to submit the transfer application for the liquor license to your board. There has been a slight change relative to the transfer of the location for the liquor license. We're seeking to transfer to a new restaurant operator at a different location within the mall as part of that lower-level Sears redevelopment, while the intention is still to utilize the Bacito space as a restaurant location. As you may know, Simon is about to embark on a significant upgrade to the mall entryways, as well as the main mall corridors, they're spending millions of, millions of dollars on upgrades to the interior of the mall. As part of that, the entrance to the mall at the food court right next to Bacito is actually going to be torn down and rebuilt, so they've determined utilizing some of that Bacito space as a temporary entrance/exit while that project's underway would make the most sense. So, the intention is still to ultimately utilize the Bacito as a, as a restaurant location, but knowing the board's reluctance to see licenses not used, our intention is to be filing for a transfer right after the beginning of the year for, for that liquor license. So, the application will probably be in, I'm going to say sometime in February. I think our planning board meeting would be the first Thursday of February, so I just wanted to update you on all that. Everything is moving forward, and we look forward to the opportunity to be before you with that operator the first quarter of 2020.
So, we're going to continue this, so the proposal is there?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, unless the board has any, any additional questions, we would ask that this be continued to March 23rd, 2020 at 6:30. And just ask that the petitioner keep the board updated as to the status of the license, please.
A question, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
To Betty. Betty, has Bacito done all the paperwork for the renewal for the license for this year?
Yes, yes, everything's in.
Thank you.
Anybody else? No? Okay, so...
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, we continue this hearing until March 23rd, 2020 at 6:30 PM.
Motion made.
I'll second it.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed against? Five zero zero in favor. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you very much.
I think you're up again, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next up, we have a transfer of a liquor license. Both the fire and building departments have reviewed and signed off on the floor plan, and we'll turn it over to Attorney Vaughn at this point for the presentation.
Paul, do we have to, we're listening to a public hearing? Is this a continued...
This is a brand-new, so I don't need to...
Okay, we do. Okay. We have to read it in. Is it going to be made again?
Oh, you seem to be that great seat right there.
Lucky me. All right, so before we get started, the board's selectmen hereby give notice that it will hold a public hearing on Monday, December 16th, 2019, at or after 6:40 PM at Town Hall, 29 Center Street, Burlington, Massachusetts, second floor, main meeting room, to consider the application for approval of the transfer of an existing all-alcohol liquor license from Uno Restaurant Incorporated, doing business as Uno Chicago Grill, 75 Middlesex Turnpike, Burlington Mall, to Fung Sat Incorporated, doing business as Karma Restaurant, for use in the operation of a full-service restaurant to be located at 75 Middlesex Turnpike, within a portion of the former Uno's restaurant location, and for approval of the new floor plan, including outdoor seating and new restaurant manager as allowed pursuant to Section 12 of Chapter 138 of the Massachusetts General laws.
Nick, I can't thank you enough.
You're very welcome, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Good evening, well done, Mr. Priest. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Attorney Mark Vaughn, law firm, Reema Bronstein, representing the applicant in connection with the transfer of the Uno's liquor license. With me tonight is Iverson Go, who is a principal with Karma Restaurant, along with Amanda Nicolosi, who is the manager of record on the application that's been submitted. So, very pleased to be before you in connection with the transfer of this liquor license to Karma for the alcohol, all alcohol license for Uno, alteration of premise and appointment of a new restaurant manager for this location. They are very excited about being able to locate a full-service restaurant within a portion of the former Uno's space along the Middlesex Turnpike side of the Burlington Mall, as I think the board's all familiar with. Just by way of background, Karma is an upscale restaurant serving Asian fusion cuisine and a casual yet elegant dining atmosphere. They have extensive experience in the industry, particularly in the eastern Massachusetts area. They currently operate three other locations in somewhat close proximity to Burlington, being Westford, Concord, and in Andover, and they have an excellent reputation and are excited about the chance to be here in Burlington. So, the facility in Burlington, it would be about 5,200 square feet of interior space. It would have a small outdoor seasonal patio dining area as well. The proposed building facade is going to be enhanced, and we have some, some boards that might be helpful just to help show the quality of build-out and design that Iverson and his team are looking for for this location. But the top board there just shows the new entrance that you would see if you're, again, you're facing it from Middlesex Turnpike, looking at the, at the former Uno space, but they're doing a, a brand-new entrance door that would be architecturally themed, along with other elements to that facade, to provide a continuity of design. There would not be any interior access to the mall, so this would be the, the main entrance into, into the restaurant. They would have a total of 161 seats. Fifteen of those are the seasonal patio dining seats. So, both Iverson and Amanda are very experienced in the restaurant industry. They fully understand the responsibilities associated with operating a restaurant and serving alcohol in the community. I know they have both familiarized themselves with Burlington's local liquor license rules and regulations as well to understand those requirements. Amanda is actually presently the manager up at the Andover Karma location and is properly certified through tips as well in terms of alcohol service. So, what I wanted to do is just briefly introduce Iverson. He wanted to say a few words and be happy to answer any questions or any, any comments you may have, so...
Hi, good evening, Chairman. Dear to the board members, me and Amanda are very excited to be here, and we are very excited to go into Burlington. Karma Restaurant was, was established in 2006. The first one's in Westford. Actually, the name was, that came from New England Patriots. I'm the sushi chef, and I'm the owner of the restaurant, and I'm, I'm very fortunate to know this player, and very fortunate they helped me to name this Karma, they named Good Karma. That means it comes around, goes around. We want to bring, we are not only wanted to bring like a good quality food, nice experience, but we are so care about the detail. We want every, we want every customer to come to visit, have a great experience, memory in the Karma. So, Amanda, she's been working with Karma over like 10 years. She's a ve- very well-experienced person. She's currently the manager in Andover, but she will be in charge like in, in the Burlington store. So, we are, we are both very excited. As you can see, the interior, this is the interior rendering, it's very contemporary and have a lot of Asian element to this, to this touch. And the, for the liquor license, over the 13 years, we have a very good record. We are very care about, very care about the...
The right side off.
Sorry about that. Yeah, so, all of the server will be like a tip, tip serve certificate. We are very focused on serving individual, not over-serve, and the better management. So, that's about it.
Okay, Amanda?
Pardon, tis the season, so my voice is a little off. So, I've been very fortunate to have worked for Iverson for, you know, the better part of 10 years now, and I consider a lot of our guests as part of our family, so my concern is to take care of them and my employees for their well-being and ours, and I'm very comfortable with, I did read through the laws for Burlington and the timeframes, and I've spoken to people who've worked in the area and loved it, and the ID cards and how everything there works. I'm very excited to move into this position in Burlington. I'm very familiar, I've worked in Andover since it opened five years ago in the manager position, and I started off in the Westford location, so I love this company, like they're my family, and as I said, and our guests as well, so very concerned in, with keeping everybody safe, following rules and regulations. Right now, everybody in Andover on my staff is tip-certified. We have meetings to go over, you know, how to handle IDing, and especially holiday seasons, college kids, and we're very, very careful about all of that, and I appreciate you guys taking the time to meet us and here with us tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, we'll start with you.
Oh, thank you. Good evening and welcome, and Mark also. Question, a general question about the waiting area and the, and the rules that you have for how many people can wait while you're waiting for seating and, or waiting for takeout or whatever? How does that work with you?
Are you asking, Bob, in terms of folks that are coming in and waiting to be seated at a table?
Waiting to be seated at a table, and, and to my interest in particular is, are they going to be allowed to have alcohol? Are they going to be served alcohol? Are they going to be able to move around any area? I'm just curious about that.
We, we've talked about that. I think Iverson's aware that the policy that the town has is that they may be able to have, I believe your policy is you have a, a one to two alcohol beverages if you're waiting for a table, but it's not the type of environment where you would be able to just stay. I mean, everywhere that you're sitting, you would have to have a menu, so there's menu availability at every one of the 161 seats. So, if it is busy and folks are waiting for a table, you may be able to have, you know, no more than a couple of beverages until your table is available.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, next to the host table, there is a gazebo detail. Is that for seating? And where do those numbers show up? On, on the first page of the project data?
So, I'm sorry, Bob, can you say it again? You come in the new entrance for the vestibule?
You walk past the host table, and there's an indoor gazebo detail, and I was just wondering, what is that and how many people may be...
Yeah, this is where B, like, you can see on, on the rendering here. So, this is the area that the gazebo you talk about, it's like a round table. So, it's kind of like a semi, like a private dining, but the people are still able to can see through it. It's just like a curtain, like a little, a partition in this area, so this area. Okay. Not, not enclosed.
Okay. Again, though, my question is, where, where does that, where do the numbers for those seats show up on the project data on the previous page? Or it shows dining area one, dining area two?
Dining area three? It's not, okay. Dining area three, Bob, I think.
Yeah, but it's not on the, it's not on the data.
But we...
We have a new plan in front of you.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, do you, we, we...
They do have a new plan.
Okay, all right.
I mean, is it more than four or five seats, or?
It's no more than six seats, Bob? Okay. Just trying to find out where it's incorporated in that overall space designation.
Well, tell you what, Mark, I mean, I couldn't find it, but at some point, if you just called Betty and give her a heads up as to what that's...
Yeah, we're not looking to add additional six, I guess...
And I didn't think you were, but I just wanted to make sure that...
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I did speak with Mark's office today, and the people working on the plan said they incorporated this table into the dining area in one and two count. So, what we'll do is we'll redo the seating on that again.
Yeah, we can clarify that and buy whatever assurance you need, so...
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mark.
Thank you. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is there going to be designated takeout parking outside just for this restaurant? I know, I think this came up before we talked about...
Yeah.
The mall is going to have restaurant parking all... The mall is going to have restaurant parking only, takeout parking only?
So the desire, and we will be pursuing this through an appropriate application with the planning board, but I think there's been a reluctance, the planning board has had to see tenant-specific short-term parking. So I think in this particular instance, we would be looking to have, I believe, up to four parking spaces that would just say fifteen-minute short-term restaurant parking, so that if someone were looking to go into Karma or Pepe's, then it wouldn't be restaurant-specific. But they are looking to have a few short-term fifteen-minute spaces.
Okay, thank you.
Michael?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, who's Belweather Properties?
Belweather, that's the Simon entity, the technical ownership entity name of the mall.
Okay, 'cause I'm looking at, I've never seen one of these before, the purchase and sale agreement, but a license, ten dollars, shocking. That's not really my question for this evening. Let's see, the timing on your restaurant, where are you in terms of permits and construction and target opening date?
For Karma?
Yes.
So permit-wise, the planning board has approved the special permit, site plan approval, for the new entrance, which we needed to get approval for. So I believe, I think Iverson could speak to it, but your building permit plans, are they before the town right now?
Oh, we already got a building permit. So we are planning to start digging the ground this month, and we are, target day, it's a late spring, so it may be like it take about six months to finish, to complete this project.
Okay, very good, good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome, Nick.
No questions, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
No questions, okay. So we're on track, everything's looking good right now. I think Bob asked a question about the alcohol and the seating and stuff like that, we got through everything, and I, I'm just gonna say, wish you the best of luck. Now I'm gonna have a tough decision, which, do I go left or do I go right? Do I go to Pepe's or do I get?
He's all good.
There are seven days in a week you don't vote.
It's gotta like that. All right, so at this point, where am I? An approval on this, right?
Mr. Chairman, can you check to see if there's any members of the public showing up to speak on this?
Sorry, so I'd like to open it up to the public. As a gentleman, would you like any comments on this at all, from the Boy Scouts?
Um, no.
Not at this point? Okay, fantastic.
It sounds good, though.
Sounds good, though? Okay, you'll be there with your family. You already got a customer. So I need the-
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, I close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five zero zero, Betty. And at this point, now we'll need an approval, right?
We're gonna need a couple.
Yeah, maybe three.
Yep, I know, thank you.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman, on the alcohol license, that we vote to approve the transfer of the all-alcohol liquor license, Fung Sat Incorporated doing business as Karma Restaurant.
Motion made?
Second.
Seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed against, five zero zero, in favor?
Do we generally make approvals of the floor plan?
We always make approvals of the floor plan, yes. But what you can do is you quote a condition on, not, we can't say anything till the state too early, but you put approval just to make sure that we get a seating count and we can see it.
Yeah, okay. With that correction, as a caveat, I'll make a motion that we approve the floor plan.
Second.
Seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed against? Same word, isn't it? Five zero zero, Betty. Favor.
Thank you very much.
Nope, we got one manager.
I'll go ahead and make the motion for the new manager.
I don't have her name in front of me, I apologize, I can't find the-
Amanda, so what was his last name?
Nicolosi.
Nicolosi?
Amanda Nicolosi. All right, we'll make a motion for the new manager, Amanda Nicolosi.
Second.
There we go.
Motion made, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, five zero zero. Okay.
Thank you.
Now we're good.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Not gonna ask you for a photo, but I do want to wish you all a Merry Christmas.
You too, Michael.
You as well.
So enjoy the holidays, thank you.
You trying to say you don't want a photo with us?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, next up.
Can I stop for one second, please? Young gentlemen, you've spent a lot of time here tonight. Would you like to come up to the front? This is only gonna take one second. Come on. Have a seat. Yeah, have a seat. So listen, I want to congratulate you on a great job you did tonight. We're gonna move right along to the next item on our agenda, but I think you've been here long enough, I think you well-earned your merit badge, and I'd just like to say congratulations. And if you were gonna be here till the end, I'd let you bang that again, but I'm gonna do it tonight, all right? So thank you so much for your time, and very proud to have you here tonight.
Hey, maybe we'll have, maybe we'll have the opportunity to see him again at an Eagle Scout Award ceremony in a few years, huh?
Wouldn't that be nice? That'd be nice, all right?
Well underway.
So thank you very much and have a good night.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank, thank you. Tell your dad I say goodnight.
Mom?
Do you want a photo? All right, sorry, Paul.
No problem, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Next up, we have a housing issue, some housekeeping here. On August twelfth, the void voted a draft agreement for the affordable housing units at one-hundred-and-sixty Cambridge Street. We were neglected to include permission for me to sign that agreement at that time. As we relate in a previous agenda item, we tried to resolve that. So the first step on this item is if you could please vote me permission to sign that original agreement, which you approved in your meeting on August twelfth.
Okay, so moved. So moved, seconded, everybody?
Do we have to read it in? No.
Moved, seconded, all those favor?
Aye.
Yes, five zero zero, Betty.
Okay, and the next part of this agenda item is, we have the final local initiative program regulatory agreement, which establishes two affordable units and a payment to the town for the fractional share of point-nine of a unit, and to authorize the town administrator to sign this document on the board's behalf.
Gentlemen?
Make a motion, we approve.
Motion made, seconded?
Second.
Does that one?
Yes.
Okay.
Paul, the fractional payment, I didn't see it noted in the agreement anywhere.
It's been received.
It's already been received and previously approved, or previously, if you need, I can get a copy.
A separate agreement on that, then?
Yeah, that was already approved.
With the planning board, or?
Yeah, I think they had negotiated the agreement, but we did receive the check.
Thank you.
Okay. So motion made, seconded, discussion was had, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, five zero zero, Betty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next up, we have an update on Burlington Beer Works. Thank you for your patience.
Last man standing.
Mr. Chairman, as the board is aware, we've instituted the best practice of being formally updated as to the status of inactive liquor licenses within the community. Attorney Sporn is here to provide us with an update on the license from Burlington Beer Works. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seiglino. Thank you, Chairman Randy, members of the board. Since I was here last, we agreed to continue the matter till this evening. Essentially, there's seven points that I'll line up this evening. One is that the economic conditions that we discussed previously, the central status quo, and it pretty well Cambridge Street was the space that was the Fire and Act Steakhouse, space remains untended, and mall status has had sort of a chilling effect on the overall license transfer lottery, which leads to my client to transfer his license to it, to be counted in the mall. License remains with Atlantic License Brokers, and I spoke with Dan Nukem just the other day, he remains optimistic that in the first quarter of the new year, that he believes that economic conditions will improve and that they're rolling back. My client did submit its application, so Mr. Swesser was going to be here tonight, his director of operations, having all this, so Mr. Swesser is taking his shifts tonight up in Salem, so my, his apologies for not being here. I want to just reconfirm the support of the Cambridge Street landlord for our position that the license not be canceled, and just to restate that a cancellation, I think, would result in a likely appeal, but it would, I think, just bring not only my client's resources, but also the town's. And just, from my personal opinion, that a cancellation would be a, an economically regressive step. So my client is, in my persona here tonight, to ask for approval of the renewal of their license and the possibility of continuing this hearing until March twenty-third, with the hopes that between now and then, that there will be a change in economic conditions in a buyer, and of course, if things happen prior to that, we would of course notify the board and update.
Gentlemen, Robert?
Yeah, I mean, it's, I hear what you're saying about the shadow that the mall and all of their licenses are gonna create for an awful lot of people around town. And it's disheartening to know that we've reached that point so quickly. But I would hope that, I would hope that we'd be able to resolve this issue, because this is just like a sore that we keep scratching and rubbing off. Hopefully, we can get this, not that we don't like seeing you, but if, but if we can stop having you come, we'd be happy.
I appreciate that, Mr. Ogun. I would like nothing better than to meet all of you at Karma or a restaurant in Burlington under different circumstances.
Wherever the new license goes. That's all I had to say, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
I do have a question. I remember you, last time you were here, you said the, there was an auction held for the license?
Yes.
What was the minimum bid that they had?
I think the, I don't, I wanna say it was seventy-five thousand dollars, and there had to be a earnest payment made to, just to qualify to, to participate in the auction, which had to weigh just five thousand dollars, and then the other requirements were, requirements that would satisfy the conditions of the board, meaning that there was a qualified premises to transfer, transfer the license to, and that the, whoever the purchaser was, had a lease for that premises.
But the actual-
There were a series of conditions, the minimum threshold of a seventy-five thousand dollar bid was obviously substantially below the market, obviously not in the ten-dollar range, which is sort of, we'll give you an idea of what we're up against, but well below market.
So the minimum bid was seventy-five?
We missed it, yes. I'd be happy to update you if that was not the case.
Good for now.
Michael?
No, sir, I'm fine.
Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Should you receive an extension this evening, and we come to March twenty-third, and we find ourselves in this situation again, would you be asking for a further extension, or do we just go ahead and take it back?
That's a, that's a fair question, and I think what I would do, how I would answer that, would be to channel my late mother, and I would say, don't write the story. But I would, and my client, I think, would understand the difficulties that would be presented by that. All I can say is that we're certainly hopeful that that's not the case, we're doing everything we can to ensure that that's not the case. Obviously, we're not guarantees that that would not be the case. I think it would depend, it would depend on the circumstances. If there was a buyer, buyers, I would like to be able to come to the, to the board in March, either with a buyer in hand or with concrete evidence that would support that there are buyers out there that we are actively negotiating. That would obviously be my preference and my client's preference.
Okay, thank you.
Merry Christmas. I got nothing to say. I got to say, I'm going through the board's wishes, and, you know, this is, it's an ongoing story, and be like your mother. Don't write the story yet, it's not over yet. So at that point, we're still have a public hearing, it's still open, right?
Yes.
We never closed the whole hearing, so we're gonna keep that open.
Continue, yep.
And at this point, we'll probably just need an approval to continue it till Wednesday date again?
March twenty-third?
March twenty-third, at six-thirty-five, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so if I can get a motion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we continue this public hearing till March twenty-third, two thousand and twenty, at six-thirty-five PM.
Okay, motion by Nick, seconded by?
Mike.
Mike. Motion made, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, agreed, good.
Thank you, Chairman, happy holidays.
Listen, a great holiday.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next up, we have appointments to the Northwest Park Housing Committee that was requested by a town meeting resolution last fall. The purpose of this committee is to work with the developer with the hopes of creating a unique elderly-affording, affordable housing component for the apartment building that was approved in September down at Northwest Park. We recommend the following members for this committee. Mike Runyon, representing the selectmen, Jim Dougherty, representing the housing committee, Barbara Leroux, representing the planning board, Shari Ellis, representing the zoning bylaw review committee, Dan Duttucci, representing Town Meeting, Chris Hanifin, representing the Veterans and Disability Access Committee Commission, Marge McDonald, representing the COA. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Michael, we'll start with you, Tony. On that one, no?
Motion approved.
Hey, it's what I was hoping for. So, motion made, seconded?
Seconded.
Motion made, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same, yep, five zero zero, good.
Thank you very much.
Sure, Michael.
Thank you.
Okay, item two-seventy-three is license renewals. At this time, I'd like to acknowledge all the hard work put in by the staff in the selectmen's office to prepare for the annual license renewals. Ton of work put in by Betty, Jean, and Sandy, and I'm amazed at how efficient they are with the process. At this point, I'll defer to Betty as to how she would like you to vote these items. These renewals have all been reviewed by the police and building departments, and we have confirmed that all the taxes have been paid to date.
Mr. Chairman, may I just jump in before we do that? I just want to acknowledge the loss of Nick Telopoulos from Old Town Liquors, who passed away, somewhat lengthy illness, but still unexpectedly, last week, and a good man who just always tried to do the right thing for the right reasons. So we send our condolences to the, to the entire Telopoulos family. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So Betty?
Yeah, so what we do is, we have a system that we go through, we request information from the Burlington Police and the fire, building departments, and then we also send letters to, we collect the, we collect all the fees, and there it is, it's, and the covered list of issued alcohol licenses for the 2020 renewal includes all available licenses, including any pending by the ABCC. So renewal fees and necessary documents have all been submitted to our office for the filing with the ABCC. And I submitted a letter to you showing the fees that we collected. It's still low.
Oh, just for the alcohol ones, right? Or do we get it for all the devices, amusement devices and everything on there?
Yes, we got all those.
I'm sorry. Okay. Are you gonna take these by group, like all the alcohol, we can vote as one?
You can, if you, if the board has any questions regarding any of these particular ones, and we have none, the police have found no issues with the used car sales, we've had no issues with any of the liquor establishments, everything's fine, so you could vote them together if you so desire, or you can do it as a separate vote.
Let me ask this question. Does anybody have any questions on any of the articles that are in front of you right now? Waits, anything at all, entertainment, cafeteria? Does anybody have any issues at all with anything that you'd like to bring up?
Just one question, if I may.
Always. Go ahead.
The active server registration?
Yes.
There are several that are, that have no registered servers.
We're on top of those already right now.
Okay.
Keith Shepherd, and there's another officer who's working with him. It's a slow process, only because they can only do it when they can do it.
Right.
But we are going to make sure that they follow our server regulations.
Okay, and is the, what's the timeframe for needing to identify who the, at least one server is?
We like to do them as soon as possible, but they like to have at least 15 candidates.
Okay.
So, we had to have, we could have five servers at one restaurant and 10 from another, and then they'll do them all at once.
Okay.
So, it might be done like every quarterly even.
Okay, great. That's all, thank you.
And just a follow-up to Nick, how, do we know how long some of these have been without?
I would have to confer with Keith on that, but if, you know, if there's something you want us to review and keep going, I'm going to keep going on it. This is something that we've decided, Keith and I and the police department said that we're going to get it settled this year and get them all identified.
Okay, excellent. So, if nobody has any issues, we vote them all on at one time, instead of going separately. You okay with that, Mr. Sagrino?
Yes.
Okay. So, at that point, I'd like to have a motion on Article 273.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion we approve Article 273, the 2020 license renewals as a whole.
Okay, motion made.
Seconded.
Seconded, made seconded, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. 5-0-0, ready. Thank you. Paul, 274.
Next up, Mr. Chairman, this past Friday was the regular deadline for town meeting warrants for January's town meeting. We would ask for a board vote to add all the items that were submitted, and then we will be reviewing them each individually at your meetings in January for a board vote if you wish to vote on the individual articles. So, I think you have a list of them there?
Any questions at all? So, once again, what we'll do, if it's okay with, Mr. Sagrino, does anybody have any questions on this article, for zoning articles, financial articles, general articles, or general bylaw articles? Does anybody have any questions on these?
This is just to get them on the warrant.
Right.
Yep, and I think Betty had just leaned over, and she would like a request to just approve the whole town meeting on that date as well.
So, what's going to happen now is what you have in front of you is just a list. And like Paul said, as the meetings go on, you can, we'll be reviewing the ones under your jurisdiction for approval.
But we can certainly answer any questions you have on the list right now.
There must have been in there. So, you want to do it all at once? Is that what you're saying?
Absolutely.
Okay. Like I said, does anybody have any questions, so they'd like to ask? None? Okay, so do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, motion made, seconded. To approve all the warrant articles for town meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Same thing, 5-0-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Okay. Okay, minutes.
Postpone.
What's that?
I said postpone. It's been a busy month.
Eight minutes to postpone, okay. Listen, you guys get the subcommittee reports, so I'm going to say it real quick. Merry Christmas, everybody. All right, go ahead, guys. I don't want to get ripped off on that one sooner or later. Subcommittees, Jimmy, go ahead.
Nothing too big on the subcommittees, but I just wanted to say that the rec department did a fantastic job with the common and the lighting this year, the tree lighting was, there was snow on the ground this year, which added to it. And all in all, that was, it was a perfect night to be on the common.
Okay, you all set?
I'm all right.
Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My end of year, year in review speech that I give every year. Actually, we, I thought we had a pretty good year this year, again. We saw the completions of the renovations that were completed at the COA. Bingo, and other activities are back up and running up there. Recently reopened, opened the new fire station, too, and just last week, broke ground for our new DPW facility, but caught a crowd, actually, at that, at that event. Also, we said goodbye to a few longtime employees last year as well. I know I'm going to forget names if I, you know, John Clancy, Steve Yetman, Eddie Mack from the police department, Chuck Woods from Water and Sewer Department, and I'm sure there's some others, I'm sure, with other folks who have left us after doing the old ones. Mr. Petron, that's right, Mr. Petron. I'm thinking longtime employees, 30-plus years. But anyhow, but we also welcomed some new faces as well this year. Mr. Denizio's doing a fine job for us down here in the corner office. We met Melissa tonight. Of course, Mr. Priest was, joined the board of selectmen here this year, and Paul taking the corner office as a town administrator. So, I think all in all, I was, I was pleased with 2019. I think the town did very well, again. Certainly, and a lot of that is based on the people of Burlington, the good people that volunteer for all of these boards and committees, and youth soccer, and our garden club, and just so many people that make Burlington such a, you know, a great place to live and work. And with that, I will wish my colleagues here this evening and everyone at home a very Merry Christmas and happy holidays. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All of my subcommittees, I think you've all heard from recently, with the exception of the ISAC. But Sculpture Park Committee has put their call out and are receiving applicants, so we'll see how that fares in the coming weeks. ISAC is continuing to have discussions around cybersecurity and governance concerns as it pertains to the town's information, both from a hardware and software perspective. I believe New Orleans was just recently attacked. I saw an email, I haven't had a chance to read it yet, from Mr. Miller. Economic development, very excited to see what Melissa can offer our wonderful town moving forward, and looking, excited to be working with her moving forward.
Nick, I didn't ask the question earlier. When does she start?
January 6th.
Thank you.
There we go.
January 6th.
Going to make a note. But otherwise, I too just have to wish everyone a safe and happy holiday season. We won't see everyone until after the new year, as we put 2019 behind us and welcome It has been an honor thus far to serve with you gentlemen on this board, and I look forward to the remainder of my term.
Thank you. I, I'm going to wait for Paul to give his report on the financial meeting we had recently with Ways and Means and the school committee to set the guidelines. So, I'm going to let Paul do the technical stuff, and then I'll have a comment after that.
Okay, so, we'll go to my report, Chairman's report. I don't have a lot. I'd like to read a couple of things with, you know, that the town common was nice with the snow on the ground when they did the trees. Brendan and the team did a great job setting up the lights, looks really nice out there for the holiday season. Hold on a second, I'm blind. That's the other thing. It did have that snow, snow plowing. So, the town did a good job with the snow plowing this last storm that we had. Hopefully, this goes out to the residents more than anybody else. We have a hard time hiring contractors, so if your street's not done immediately, it's because we don't have the help to get out there. We have the town equipment, which does a great job, but we also need private contractors. The problem is, nobody wants to do it anymore. So, and it's, it was a national, not a national, statewide, it was on the news a couple times, Fox 25 had it on, that the contract is very hard to find. So, please keep that in mind when you're, when, you know, you're out there looking out the window, and it's, you know, 7:30 and your street hasn't been done yet, there's still, the guys are out there, they're going to get, they're going to get it done. It's just a matter of when they get there because of the number of people we have. So, on that note, I'm going to leave that alone. I would like to say Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to everybody. I hope everyone enjoys their time off and their time with their family. It's the most important part, is family more than anything else, so enjoy that. And at this point, Mr. Sagrino, we'll go right to your chairman's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You're the chairman.
Whatever. You're my boss.
It's late.
So.
Yeah, we've never worked this late before. You know that, right? I'm way behind schedule.
Just to touch upon what Selectman Hogan said, we had two very thoughtful meetings with Ways and Means and members of the school committee, as well as town financial staff this past week to work on guidelines. We'll be making, bringing that to the board for a vote at our first meeting in January. But again, I think there was a very great exchange of information in terms of pressures that the schools are facing, pressures that the town's facing, as well as obviously the pressure on the residents' tax bills. So, we had a very thoughtful discussion. We will be presenting that to you in January for a full discussion. So, thank you to Bob, two early morning meetings last week, so very thankful that he was able to attend on behalf of the board. I do have a couple of other items here. We did receive another grant for the electric vehicle charging station out here from, from the Commonwealth, thanks to Rachel Kaplan on that one again. This one is due to the, for about $3,800, and it's a result of the fact that one of the units is accessible for persons with a disability. So, kudos to Rachel again. She keeps driving down the cost of that project. We're still waiting for the electric company to come and install the meter that we need to get the thing running, but we're just about ready to go. I know she promised us by Thanksgiving, but, you know, she can't be perfect at everything, so still, still waiting on that to finally be operational. Some more good news from Marge McDonald's. We received a grant from the state to replace one of our COA vans. It's about, for about $40,000, and the town will match about $9,000, and we're going to be able to purchase, I believe they have picked out a van that will allow us to, with a lift, that will allow us to primarily bring folks to doctor's appointments, particularly people who have difficulty mobility, require the ramp to get, to get onto the vans. So, kudos to Marge, another grant, some more additional funds to the town from the state, so she did a great job on that. Last up, I just wanted to personally thank all the employees of the town and the school for a great year. Been in, working in this position since March, and I just can't thank our employees enough in all departments, all divisions. Everybody just works as a team, and they really care about providing great services to the residents. So, I just wanted to thank everybody who works for the town for all the work that they do, and also, again, just to wish all the residents seasons greetings, Happy Holidays, Merry Christmas, whatever you celebrate, have a great, have a great holiday season.
Thank you, Paul. Did you have?
Yeah, I just wanted to piggyback on to the guideline meeting that we had with the Ways and Means and the school committee. All the things that we hear all year long come to fruition during that discussion, you know, their taxes are too high, we've got a, you know, a large business community, why can't they be paying more money? The schools want more money, you know, all the employees, you know, it's, we've, we heard it all, we kind of ran through all of the scenarios, and, and we came up with a number, again, that will be presented at a future meeting. I know the school committee at their meeting tomorrow night will be discussing it, and Ways and Means are going to?
Wednesday.
Wednesday night, they're going to try to tackle it and come up with a number. But Dr. Conti was very adamant that he realizes and knows that the Burlington schools are funded well. But, you know, they always, you know, we all have things we would like to have, you know, in a perfect world. So, it was, it was a good meeting. They were, you know, very active, and, you know, we came to pretty good consensus, I think, on where we were going with, with our finances and the town going forward, so thank everybody involved in that meeting.
Excellent, thank you. Anything else? Old business, new business? Citizens time? Absolutely not. We're good. So, if this, take a motion to?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.